What's that you're saying, Chris?
I'm just sharing with everybody that my phone broke today, so I don't have.
Oh.
I don't have a phone to work. You know, something that is harder than I thought.
Okay, we'll call the April the eighteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting in Lock Haven City Council where please rise from bonus size, followed by the board of leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call for.
Councilmember Byerly.
Here.
Councilmember Conklin.
Here.
Councilmember Missouri.
Here.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
Here.
Councilmember Morris.
Yeah.
Mayor Long.
Here. Approval of the minutes of the April fourth regular meeting.
Move through. Second.
Motion for floor and second and any further questions or comments? Call for vote.
Councilmember Byerly.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes. Public comments and requests. For A. Is. Yeah.
Downtown Lock Haven is requesting to use Triangle Park during Small Business Appreciation Week. They want to have giant letters in the park that say, we are LH, and then people would use chalk to write their supportive businesses on those letters. That would be throughout the week. And then they want to hang a sign on the East Nathan Street parking lot fence from May to October, just promoting farmer's market and letting people know what the dates are. And then they have an update for Side Street Saturday. They want to move to the Station Gallery, and then the streets wouldn't have to be closed along the Broken Axe. And they're working with the Dutch Haven and the Village Tavern and Station Gallery, as well as Broken Axe. So I think we'll provide music and drinks, and then there'll be food there as well. So that would be June eleventh, July ninth, and September tenth. Originally, the request was to close the street around all of those restaurants, so now they're all just collaborating for those days.
So if we would have to approve the use of Triangle Park, the rest of it is just, well, and the sign.
Yes.
Main Street lot, the rest is just having updates.
Well, Jeffrey's Alley.
Oh, yeah.
Was behind Station Gallery.
So do I have a motion to that effect?
I move all three requests. Second.
Motion for floor and a second. Any further discussion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Byerly.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes. For B.
This is just to let everyone know and invite anyone who would like to help out that downtown Lock Haven, the city of Lock Haven, Lock Haven University, and Susquehanna Greenways is doing an Earth Week cleanup throughout the city. The cleanup days are April nineteenth, twenty-first, and twenty-second for the city cleanup. And on the twentieth, they will be on Glen Road by the university and meeting at ten AM at the downtown Lock Haven office for the nineteenth, twenty-first, and twenty-second. And we'll be cleaning up the parks, Main Street, as well as the levee. So if anyone would like to participate on any of those days, they can contact me or Kiera Rosamilia.
Thank you. So C and D are basically the same thing.
We have two weddings on, one is on May fourteenth and one is on October first, held in Zindel Park. So I'll work with them to make sure they sign waivers and get their deposits in.
I have a motion.
Move.
And a second. Any questions, comments? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Byerly.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes. Do we have any other public comments?
I have none, Your Honor. They should bring their snow shovels on April nineteenth.
Yeah, it'll be a different time to clean up. Um. Unfinished business five, a consideration of resolution number twenty twenty-two dash seventeen.
This is a request to the Lock Haven City Authority from the city for reimbursement from the authority's water system capital reserve account. Now that the city is in possession of and has awarded the contract for the restoration work of the Cummings Village water tank. This would be overall a request of an estimated ninety-two thousand dollars from the authority to the city to cover the cost of the maintenance, repair, restoration of that tank.
What's the question, counsel?
Move resolution twenty twenty-two seventeen.
Motion for floor and a second. Any questions, comments? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Byerly.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes. I'd be consideration of the twenty twenty-two capital improvement program.
These are the great big giant worksheets which have remained unchanged since they originally were met by your eyes, but this is the time of year then when those capital projects that were apportioned from the allocations that the city does during the annual budget would be endorsed as the official projects of the city. This enables us on a lot of different levels not to come every single time to request for an RFP or for permission to bid. Because it kind of gives prior approval that that's the intent of council, that these be the projects of the current future years. That, as always, is reliant on whether or not the funds actually exist to accomplish those projects. So just again, because the public may see one particular project listed in twenty twenty-two, if we don't receive the revenue necessary to accomplish that particular project, then it would just be bunk to a future year. So an example of that would be Fattlin Alley. We did have that on twenty twenty-one. We didn't get the particular grant that we were going after, so now it's a twenty twenty-two project. We'll find out this year if we can make that grant.
What's the question, counsel? Approving it over, is that what we're doing here?
Yeah, it's an approval of the program itself. It's not the approval of the expenditure of any money, it's the approval of these are the projects overall that the city has on its agenda.
Move approval of the several approvals appropriate.
Motion for floor and a second, any questions, comments? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Byerly.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes. I see, update on twenty twenty-three. Post stormwater.
Now that's. Council had moved to have city staff pursue the implementation of the stormwater management fee. I did have a discussion with the city solicitor who did a great deal of investigation on the topic. And it, according to the city solicitor, the city could directly collect the stormwater management fee without having a separate entity to do that. That is predominantly, not predominantly, that is precisely because we are an optional charter third-class city. And that enables us to have a greater expansive of what we can do compared to a traditional third-class city. So it is something the city could collect, which is always going to be part of the administration. First and foremost, can you collect it and how can you collect it? So then the next step in order to prepare an ordinance that will have to guide it that could be considered for public discussion would be to find a fee that council feels comfortable as a stepping off point for that charge of that fee. I do want to be very clear that that fee does provide then for covering costs that some of those costs are currently in the general fund. So it pulls those from the general fund into the stormwater fund. Those would be the costs of street sweeping and the cost that we already spent on Department four, three, six, which is stormwater, streets of stormwater. To some degree, four, three, eight, which is the department, if you look online at the budget, you can see Department four, thirty-eight in the general fund is streets total. Stormwater is called out separately from that, but to a degree, some of streets would be pulled out of the general fund as well and go into stormwater. And that would be the portions where we have to do work or restoration that require paving. That paving cost would be removed from the general fund and instead paid for by the fee. So it is, in a way, displacing tax revenue with the fee, which helps to stave off the necessity to increase taxes in order to cover the cost of the restoration, repair, and in some places, implementation of stormwater management back into the city. Overall, it is a one point three, one million dollar project. If we were to do it today, only in the areas that are known to have stormwater. There are certainly many streets that don't have curbs and that have no storm drains at all. But to do that over a thirty-year process of replacing everything is obviously something that would be much more manageable for a community like the city of Lock Haven than running out and spending one point one million dollars that we fiscally don't have to expend in one given year. So what I come tonight to counsel with is from the presentation that Quinn Dalton informant gave, they did give three choices as examples for an annual stormwater management fee. And they also provided examples from other municipalities who charged that fee as well and what they charge annually. And so tonight, it would just be my request that council come up with a dollar value as an annual fee that could be included in the draft order.
Do we have any idea how how it's going to be billed? I mean, are we billing it with water and sewer and through that same process or how are we going to build quarterly or do we know?
I did speak with the, but I the water department spoke with the utility billing software we use, which is MuniLink, which I did see Williamsport just picked up MuniLink as well. But we can bill it on the quarterly utility bill. And so it could go on to that so that people could pay it quarterly instead of all at once. And it would only be billed to customers within the city limits. So we do have some customers within the city limits that we charge sewer to, but not water, because they're suburban customers, so they would see that on their sewer bill. So anyone who lives within the city limits, people outside the city limits that the city bills, like Cassidy and Wayne Township and a few people in Allison, would not see that on their bill. And that may be the most tolerable way for people to pay it would be on quarterly water sewer utility bill.
Just saying be a flat fee, not based on area?
So the flat fee, the equivalent residential unit is what was developed by the engineer from measuring every residential parcel and coming up with basically the average.
So the commercial is the same?
No, the commercial would be just like in Bald Eagle Township, most of our surrounding municipalities charge EDU, equivalent dwelling unit for sewer. So every household pays the same rate, but then when it comes to a commercial enterprise, the engineers would actually assess how much in this case, pervious compared to impervious area there is, and then they would calculate how many EDUs or ERUs that translates it to. The same is done for Kroger, for example, you know, they measure Kroger's flow, compare that to the average household, that tells you how many EDUs Kroger has to pay.
And the total is seventy-three thirty includes all the commercial.
Yes.
And other properties, non-profits, nonprofits.
Yes.
Churches and other businesses.
Right, it's it's a fee just like water and sewer.
Right, right, I just wanted to make that clear that everybody, yeah, everybody's sharing this one.
Right.
All users share this.
Right, every enterprise that is not a household or every structure or property that is not a household residential unit would be assessed this, so it would include nonprofits as well.
Now, if I install three rain barrels, do I get it?
So as part of the directions from the city solicitor, the law that we would try to mirror in implementing it here is that found in the second-class township code. And that does legally require that the municipality provide for discounts and those discounts are for installation of things you do on your own property in order to help trap maintain. So rain barrels would get you a credit, we would have to draw what that would be, but it's not unprecedented, it's consistent across the board that everyone provides that.
Who who determines or evaluates or goes out to check if I have three rain barrels, no rain barrels?
That does have to be, as part of the ordinance, that does have to be checked annually to ensure that you continue to maintain the credit.
Now, Richard, you can't just open the valve for the rain barrel and let it run down your driveway, that doesn't count.
It would be checked for proper installation, and it would be checked to make sure that it's still there. And so that would be part of what the individuals in public works assigned to stormwater. We would basically use a similar to a property maintenance preventative maintenance software in order to keep track of when to go out each year, assess people's improvements to make sure that they still meet the qualifications for this help.
We talked about sewer and water months like two ago. The cost factor for that. Question, if we decide to do this and we start doing the roads, and then two years, a year from now, we decide to go do the water and sewer, wouldn't it be, I'm just thinking advantageous for us to do all at the same time? You know, like the, instead of doing like one right, you know, do these main streets on one day and then.
Take care of a street.
Yeah.
That we would
Do all three.
Take care of all of it and then pay.
Because what you'll see then is each of those funds, which have their own revenue sources, contributing to their percentatival of the paving for restoration work. So you may see the general fund only having to cover, say, fifty percent of the cost of paving a block with water, sewer, and stormwater covered.
Yeah.
Alex and connected versus.
Yeah.
I think that was part of the presentation too, so they were encouraging us to.
We've been trying to take that approach the last couple of years anyways, is that, you know, if we're going to pay this, I think we might as well go ahead and fix the stuff underneath so we don't rip it up again, right?
In the short term, with the initial revenue generated from the fee, which wouldn't begin until twenty twenty-three, I think anyone who drives around the community can see areas that we would probably list as emergency stormwater needs. Where not only are there curbs missing, but the fact that there are missing curbs has created significant erosion in some areas to mirror what looked like ditches in a community without ditches. So there are places that we do need kind of immediately to start spending some money just to prop those up and get those repaired, so that water is not going up to people's individual properties and it's staying where it is. But as we move forward with the program, definitely, it's a combination of replacing the water, sewer, stormwater infrastructure and paving as one solid project moving forward.
I appreciate the survey that we saw on Facebook, I shared it. I really appreciated the history lesson. Could you share a little bit about the history of how the money was raised years ago? So maybe the public would know that, because I'm not sure if everybody saw it on Facebook.
People have until, speaking of the survey, people have until the end of May to go online and weigh in on how they feel would be best to address stormwater infrastructure in the community. And one of those choices is, I don't think we should spend money on it unless something breaks, you know, so there are legitimate choices. We're not guiding you to choose whatever the person who created the survey thinks is the right answer, but originally, there's a little wooden box, which I meant to bring. It's a little box full of index cards, oversized index cards, and every single property in the entire city of Lock Haven got one of those cards. And the way that the city, when it originally installed stormwater infrastructure, is it would lean your property for the value of the improvement that was done. So that would be the curb, the paving, when the curb was replaced, it may have been sidewalks in some places if that had to be deserved and put back. And then the drainage pipe, and if you had, if you were lucky enough to get a sluice, you know, then I guess that was billed to you too on behalf of all your friendly neighbors. So everyone was apportioned that cost to their property as a lien. So then people were required to make payments on that lien, and some people made small payments, some people paid it off all at once, some people didn't pay that. So the city had the ability to take several different actions if people didn't make the payments on their stormwater infrastructure that was put on as a lien. And one of those, the city can basically execute the lien and force your assets to be sold to gain the money that you owe. The other is when you sell the property, the city at that point would collect its money when you sold it from the sale of the property. So you still would end up paying it out of your sale price. That was really in the fifties and sixties is when primarily that was the way forward. And I will admit, because I wrote that paragraph, that does seem a little heavy-handed today. It certainly is still a legal avenue for the city, but it does seem like any equivalent residential unit seems a little fairer to pay overtime than to just have that cost, which could be pretty significant if you have a lot of width to your property on the street. So yeah, if you're a corner property, your linear footage is maybe three times what your neighbor might do. And all of that would be billed in this proposal as an ERU that is the same as your neighbor. In the previous way, that would all be leaned on your property, so it would definitely take a corner property much longer to pay off. But anyone who checks out that page would encourage everyone to take that survey. The results are, when to come to council, when you actually see the ordinance for this, to help you in your decision-making. And also online is the twenty twenty-three budget discussion, which this is part of. And so you can also take a current survey, there'll be numerous surveys throughout the year on the twenty twenty-three budget. The first one is up there now, so encourage anyone to go on and and take that as well. So far for the surveys, the people that have started them for stormwater, we have greater than eighty percent completed. It's it's only three questions. And I think some people may start it and then change their mind and close it, but the same is true with the budget one. It's about eighty percent of people who start it, complete it, I think that's only two questions.
So you're asking us, at this point, to take action on a dollar level?
To include in the ordinance.
Including yours, and we are not voting on the ordinance at this time. So that, you know, it's not a matter of that you're going to go ahead and say, yes, we're going to go forward this, but we're giving direction as to a dollar value that we consider.
Is that dollar value one of these three choices?
These are the three recommended by the engineer. You can pick a dollar out of the air. Again, you could start at one point one million a year, but going from zero to sixty isn't something all of us could do on a regular basis. I think the one point one, I would just counsel would be the ultimate goal, but may not be the jumping off point that people feel comfortable with. But I think when you look at the aging infrastructure, some of which is seventy years old, it it just has to be something that we account for, the expenditure for better.
And is it, are are we looking at this and saying, this is a fee that we're looking to assess for stormwater management that's going to be an ongoing fee? We're not talking about, we put this on and then we're going to this money's going to be specifically earmarked for these projects in perpetuity. This is how we're going to, this is how we're going to restore and maintain, so that future generations aren't looking at us and saying, what in the heck happened in these last fifty years?
Yeah.
Okay.
But this fee could be changed from year to year as the.
Correct, it is a fee, so it can be adjusted by the resolution of council. So it would be something you examine every year as part of the budget, just like water and sewer, to make sure that the fee is covering the costs.
If we take option two, three sixty-six fifty or five hundred, will that be our budget that we only do? Will we stick with that budget or for this year, the upcoming budget, or will we try to go to the general fund to offset? Say the fee eventually comes to four fifty, four and fifty thousand?
Well.
That's, I mean, that's.
If if you set three sixty-six is what your max is.
Right.
When it comes to utilities, like water, sewer, stormwater, those are best-made plans of mine submitted. So if we schedule projects, say we had three hundred and sixty-six thousand, it's scheduled three hundred thousand dollars worth of improvements and cover costs of labor and things like that, and reserve sixty-six thousand. You would hope that nothing would fail, that you hadn't foreseen failing, that had a value of sixty-six thousand or more. Right, so we didn't foresee Youngdale Road water distribution main cracking open and causing tens of thousands of dollars worth of maintenance that was not budgeted. But it still had to be paid for and repaired. So if you're setting a number, we can't budget like looking at the bottom, we can't budget seven hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars worth of improvements, there has to be money set aside for the unknown. Because that that's the nature of the aging infrastructure.
I think a good starting off point, even though it's a half million dollars short, starting in year one, it's a good start to take care of what needs fixed and replaced now, and then work into the improvement program those proactive projects that we can schedule and time and fix going forward. But there's a lot of catch-up to do that we haven't done, and I'd like that it all Going forward, but there's a lot of catch-up to do that we haven't done, and I'd like that it all. Includes everybody in the city, uh including the nonprofits, this was discussed earlier. Because everybody pays its fair share. It's something we have to address. And whether you take it out of this, you take it out of the general fund, we have to pay it somehow and some way. Where this is a more equitable, everybody shares the fee. And uh I I don't think a hundred E R U is too much to ask to start looking at the. Examples down the chart like Meadville's at ninety, I'm sure they're gonna think uh Baldwin's at ninety-six. Edmanburg, Edmanburg is ninety-six. I'm I'm sure there, I don't know how they come up with that one four-dollar odd thing. But incrementally, they're gonna eventually, as costs go up for materials and supplies and whatever they're gonna do. Are gonna have to jump it up, but I'd rather, we have so much catch-up to do, I would, I could support the hundred-dollar E R U. Are you making that a motion?
I I will.
So that would be split over four quarters.
Correct.
Twenty-five dollars a quarter.
I have a motion before. Second, and I have a second. Further discussion?
Is it absolutely required? I'm a simple soul. If you ask these people for money to achieve an objective. It's good to use that money to achieve the objective, to start to give it away. And then to incur the overhead cost of checking that we're giving it away in the right way. Seems to me to be defeating the object of setting the fee in this space.
According to the solicitor, uh the second-class township ordinance, which is the one which is fashioned. Ours after has. It provides for appropriate exemptions or credits for properties which have installed and are maintaining stormwater facilities that meet best management practices. So I'm not saying that that law means that your rain barrel saves you a hundred dollars a year. But maybe it saves you ten dollars a year. So.
But who causes at least ten dollars to go send somebody out to check that his rain barrels?
Yeah. I don't disagree.
I I don't disagree, but it's something for the solicitor to review in the draft process. Of what would be appropriate as far as the installation that is permitted in the second-class township to be credits.
Well, venting is what keeps my blood pressure down, so.
Well, no, and I I think that that's, you know, obviously, that's not something really that's part of this motion. But I think it's something that we need to know. I think that, you know, when it comes time to vote on the actual. Ordinance or whatever it is that we're putting forward, they don't wanna know that.
The rain barrel part might be the very end, bottom end of that type of exemption. The bigger part is if somebody puts a parking lot in and puts in the natural uh filter filtration. Yes, and 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 there's like a Suez Canal, all the water goes there, then it dissipates into the ground. And doesn't come into the stormwater system. And the people that spend that kind of money deserve to get some type of a break on. Making sure that it's still functional, but that they're not paying that fee. Because you need E R U might be four or five for that particular building because of big roof and parking lot. And if they can offset one or two E R Us, then good for them and good for us, because that's, we don't have to deal with the all that water.
Because that does go into, you know, improving the lines is also making sure they have the correct capacity. Yeah. So if somebody upline or to put in retention basins, holding tanks, uh rain gardens. And that reduces the flow that needs to go into the pipe. That does ultimately save the city money because we wouldn't have to increase the size of the existing pipe as much. I'm sure we have to increase it, but maybe not double. You know, maybe it's just slightly larger, which would certainly save the city money because those. Particular parcels of land made that investment themselves.
In fact, we should encourage that to happen because even in there are particular drawings. Or the planning commissioner or something should be asking, are you putting in basins and and doing the things, the the green way? To to do it instead of just dumping them on the street.
Any other comments, question? Call for the vote, please.
Councilor Byerly.
Yes.
Councilor Conflin.
Yes.
Councilor Missouri.
Yes.
Councilor Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilor Brinker.
Yes.
Councilor Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes. Five D, update on the Dora request.
Um as you recall, at the last meeting of twenty twenty-one, outgoing council member. Uh Alexander Di Costanza asked if the council would have the city staff. Look at a designated outdoor refreshment area and what that means. I did provide counsel and update on that. If uh you think of the Lock Haven Jams Festival, that's basically a Dora for a single event. And so um I did consult the city solicitor. It is something that we could do for specific events like the jams. It's also something that you could do for um another area if council so desired. There wasn't a request to do it. There was just a request to see if um it is something that would be feasible. And so that provides you the information that indeed it would be if council was so interested.
Former council member Costanza will be happy.
I did forward it to uh former council member.
Five E, consideration of the proposed framework of cost-sharing agreement.
This is the. Document put together by the city engineer. And at the next meeting of the Water Filtration Authority, which is the last Wednesday of this month. Will propose to the Central Clinton County Water Filtration Authority. The cost-sharing amendments necessary for that entity to. Allocate the cost of the improvements for the DM improvement projects. So that basically suburban and Lock Haven's customers cover the share of those improvements percent to total flow. Currently, the city's about fifty-five percent and suburban's about forty-five percent. So it would be asking for uh the suburban portion to pay forty-five percent of the the cost of those improvements. Uh they do drink the water from those reservoirs and the wells that will be brought online to replace Keller while it's under construction. And then also be online for future growth. Uh they will drink that water as well. And the cost-sharing agreements have been in place since uh basically nineteen ninety-three. And this would be an update to that particular agreement. It would need to be something that was drafted by. The solicitor of the. Clinton County Water Filtration Authority and then reviewed by the solicitor of both suburban and the city. Before it would come back to council for its endorsement.
So we should council.
I think we should draft a cost-sharing agreement and update it since nineteen ninety-three, did you say? Things change, but we also need that agreement for the end best one. Right uh when we start to do this. So it's good to start this down so everybody gets a chance to review it. There's no big shocking anything there that's just. Pay your share and we'll all have water.
Oh, had to be grounded. And the debt service for that, that might have been two thousand and six. Um the debt service of, for that is allocated between um suburban and the city through the filtration authority. Percent of total flow as well. So there is precedent um on the books for doing that.
So, did you make a motion?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Motion for a second, any other discussion questions?
Has there been, I. Not sure. Was there talk about getting together with any of the uh other members? Discussing new agreement since nineteen ninety-three? I remember, I think, remember back at December, there was discussion that council wanted to to get together to.
Oh, that was the city authority.
Yeah.
Yeah. That was the city authority, not the, not the, not the water authority.
Yeah, the Water Filtration Authority is um five members from the city, two from Woodward, two from Mill Hall, and two from Flemington. And those six represent the interest generally speaking of suburban, although that has other municipalities it serves. But the agreement is ultimately um an agreement of the filtration authorities that both the city and suburban sign on to. And so it's almost um like saying the way we negotiate is the water filtration authority.
Call for the vote.
Councilor Byerly.
Yes.
Councilor Conflin.
Yes.
Councilor Missouri.
Yes.
Councilor Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilor Brinker.
Yes.
Councilor Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes. Do you have any other unfinished business?
I had none, Your Honor.
New business. Six A, consideration of the appointment of two members of council to a subcommittee. Review six proposals received for solar consulting.
The Director of Public Works is here as um via Zoom and the magic of television. And so I'll let him speak to that.
Hi, Tony.
Hello. Uh so we received six proposals last Thursday for the solar RFP. Um we would like to set up a subcommittee of council to review those. And I think I have it projected uh towards the end of May to make us, or to have them interviewed and selected. So the wish is to um meet meet with uh two members of council and hopefully we can find somebody to provide a solar.
I would be interested in that.
I would like to have a session that. Tony, are these six new bidders or are there some names that we have seen before?
Um, there are six new names, but two of them are from previous submissions. That makes sense. They're they're different companies now. Um I did receive these electronically, so I do have them electronically. Um I can get printed forever from the subcommittee.
Anybody else uninterested? So I guess we need a motion to point Richard and I as the subcommittee members.
I'll make that motion.
Motion for a second, any further questions, comments?
Our service of order, if one or you two can make it, since we have put fingers in the solar program before.
You wanna amend the last.
And then that to add Steve is the old.
Okay, so we have motion for a floor and a second uh call for the vote.
Councilor Byerly.
Yes.
Councilor Conflin.
Yes.
Councilor Missouri.
Yes.
Councilor Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilor Brinker.
Yes.
Councilor Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes. Six B, consideration of resolution number twenty-two dash eighteen.
So an unusual little bill was introduced uh to the Pennsylvania State House. There really isn't enough time for it to pass, however, um the resolution, House Bill twenty-four seventy-five. If adopted, would change the definition of what is tax exempt. So that it includes universities that would have to pay real estate tax. I included for council's consideration and uh people may remember that. As part of the overall budget presentation, we discussed the median household in the city, which is two oh eight South Fairview Street. And that particular property, just as an example, the median property, has a real real estate bill of eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars. And as a reminder, one hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty cents of that bill is to subsidize the fact that the university is tax exempt. So. When you look at just the fourteen state schools, it's a significant burden. On the local property owners in that community to subsidize the cost of higher education. And that burden is not borne by peer communities. You know, Lock Haven. Real estate tax rate is influenced by the number of nonprofits, but most significantly by the university. Alacquippa, Pennsylvania uh does not have as high of a median real estate bill as the city. And. Alacquippa is in Act forty-seven, which means the state has pushed them to raise their taxes to a very high level. But the university still puts a larger burden. So in order to catch the attention of people that this is something that communities like Lock Haven. Would like to see pursued in some way, shape, or form. And even if that just meant that in the end, there was some kind of consistent pilot. Across the fourteen state schools, which there isn't at all right now. But, you know, we are um a similar-sized community to Carthage Dale, Pennsylvania. With our population and so Lock Haven's median real estate tax is three thirty-three percent higher than Carthage Dale. And that's included in this resolution. Now, that does seem um significant until you see that Clarion Borough's median real estate tax. Is a hundred and eighty-eight percent higher than their peer community at Carmel. So it really runs the gambit, but consistently um university communities are bearing. The local residents of those communities are bearing a good portion of the cost of the subsidy of higher education. Instead of the state bearing that cost uh by providing for a consistent pilot paid by the state, for example, to the host communities. I did work on this resolution with two members from the Pennsylvania Municipal League to get it to this point. Um it will be personally mailed if adopted by council to each of the people listed on the second page as CCs. That's the hierarchy of the House in both the Democrat and Republican offices. As well as the individuals on the Finance Committee to which it was um referred by the House. Like many bills, it may go nowhere this year, but um if this were adopted by council, it would be forwarded to the Municipal League. And the Municipal League has a coalition of the fourteen state post communities. And so similar resolutions could be provided to them and encourage them to sign on to it. It also, it's a bill that would affect the affiliated schools, which is Pitt, for example, and Penn State. So we may see them sign on to it as well. Penn State has hosted those coalition. Meetings in the past of the fourteen state schools and their fourteen post communities as well as Penn State and Pitt. Um they were relatively well-attended prior to the pandemic, and so hopefully something that will come back, but. I would just request that council give consideration to this resolution to be forwarded to. The members of the House that are listed on the second.
Let's wish council.
New resolution twenty-two.
Motion for a round a second. Any further discussion?
Well, I would urge, all due deference to the city manager, I mean, it's for me. I would urge my colleagues on council not to adopt this resolution. This bill seems to me to be wrong on its face and bad policy. It's wrong on its face because the state universities are not accepted by virtue of the public. And the Republican Charities Act, they're exempted because the consolidated assessment law exempts them. The state-related universities are immune from taxation because. As a group, they form the Commonwealth Iris Commonwealth System of Higher Education. Which the state has said is an instrumentality of the Commonwealth and therefore immune from taxation. And if you try and skirt around the fact that the university does not own most of the buildings that it's occupied. By taxing the Commonwealth, good luck trying to get the Commonwealth to agree to tax itself. So for all of those reasons, it seems to me to be flawed legislation. And as a matter of policy. We can't, on the one hand, applaud Lock Haven University for freezing its tuition. And then in, and therefore restricting its revenue, and then. and then impose an additional cost burden on it. We're facing both ways at the same time. We can't adopt a resolution that requires PASHI for trying to consolidate three universities to save costs and then impose additional cost burdens on all of them. Poor Old Mansfield has to borrow money to pay its bills. University of Pittsburgh has an endowment of $4.6 billion, and yet this, this legislation would treat both of those institutions in exactly the same way. That seems to me to be absolutely problematic. And for all of those reasons, I would far rather that this city did not sign on to this extremely flawed piece of legislation.
Sir, comments, questions?
I urge you to pass this resolution because the state universities have been drastically underfunded and rely totally on, mostly on tuition, and tried to balance their budgets with that instead of funding it to the proper level, which Richard's probably right, this probably doesn't have a chance to pass, but it lays the groundwork to know that in the future that we're going to ask for maybe not tax exemption, but a greater, in lieu of taxes or something along those lines for services. All the statistics point to that they do not have, afford a greater economic benefit to the community that they're in that was thought of for years, that we're actually more depressed of those of us that have state universities, and there's something there has to have given take, and if they're going to be here, we welcome them, we, we need to support them, but they also need to help support us as the example that was given on the 208 South Fairview Street property. So I, I urge us to pass it in for, for tuition, in, in name only for now, but see what happens later. At least we're, we're supporting the Municipal League and the other university towns, and, and I think we should continue to push towards that if we could.
Anyone else have any?
I can't let this go. Sorry, I cannot let this go. The university owns $15 million of real estate in its own name. If this were the bid to become law, they would then have an obligation to pay not only the city's taxes, but taxes to the county and the school district. That's half a million dollars, almost half a million dollars. The university will have to pay to those three. Who's going to pay that half a million dollars? It's going to go into tuition fees. So in the one hand, you have a state university that is supposed to make education accessible to people who otherwise couldn't afford it, and then in the same voice, we sit here and crank up those fees. Steve is absolutely right. The system is underfunded. If we believe as a host community that the system needs more money, we should go ask our state representatives for more money from the state. If they give the universities a certain amount of discretionary spending, that we could then negotiate with the university to direct our ways, fine. But expecting expecting the institutions to pay real estate taxes seems to me to be just, it's trying to generate money out of nowhere, and you can't do it that way. You're going to keep generating it out of exactly the people for whose benefit you have the university in the first place, and that seems to me to be asked back on. Oh, I'm sorry, I said too much.
Oh, that's just enough. That's enough. Does anybody else have any? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Byerly.
Yes.
Councilmember Conflin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
No.
Mayor Law.
No. Sixty. Consideration expenditures for paving of West Fourth Street from Irwin Street to the city line.
Turn this over to the Director of Public Works.
Okay, so Flemington is doing a paving project this year with their liquid fuels money, and they are doing Fourth Street. So the local Penn dot rep asked me if we would consider doing the remainder of Fourth Street from, it's halfway, it's a halfway block from Allison Street to Irwin Street. I had asked him to provide an estimate, and that is what is before you, but I realized on Thursday he didn't have the full mailing down, so I had him, had him provide an updated estimate. So that would be an additional 470 square yards and an extra $1,420 to make a total project cost of $10,636.25. So this is before you, and hopefully we can get a motion to approve this, and we'll have all Fourth Street updated with new paving.
Do you have the utilities upgraded on that, or do you plan on doing that too?
We televised them last week when Darren let us know about the paving project. Everything is in good condition. We'll just put new inlet tops on the inlets there that we have in stock, and we should be good.
Will this detract from any other paving we want to do in the city, or cut down on it?
We actually don't have any other paving.
I told you, and East Bone Eagle Street, Red Street.
Those are CDBG funded.
Okay.
So this would come from Capital Projects Fund, which currently has 586,000. So it would come from that. If we did not spend this year's Act 13 allocation, which we spent the last two years on improvements to downtown, if we did receive around what we received last year, which was 11,000, that could be allocated to cover this cost as well. Act 13 is from the natural gas wells.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move the expenditure.
A motion and a second. Any further questions or comments?
I just want to comment that, you know, this, I had discussions with some folks recently about projects that the city has done with Flemington for years, and this is just another one of those little projects that we joined that in doing, if that makes a difference to our communities as a whole.
But it actually should save us money, I think, because they're already there, they're already working, contract prices given at a decent price, and for us to attach to that is probably a smart, yeah, smart move.
Flemington and the city learned, I mean, long ago, that doing our projects together saved us both money, and we've consistently seen that, and we did meet with them this spring about what our future projects we could work on, and they brought this to the table as one of the options, because they are doing their whole section. We have a very small section, but it is very deteriorated. And so it definitely is something that gets us both a better product, but a better product for all the residents and drivers on that area. It's always good when you cross municipal lines and don't say, well, obviously I'm in the city.
Well, and, and that was the other point I was going to make, and I don't want to prolong this, but the fact of the matter is, I've spoken with people through the churches that are pastors outside the area, that say, I've never noticed the difference between where Flemington starts and Lock Haven. Well, that's the whole point. You know, when, when you get a project, when you get a project together so that it looks like a unified community, then, then, then you're succeeding at providing a better environment for the people that live there.
I traveled around municipalities, and I could tell where one municipality ends and the next one begins, not by the sign, but by the way the road changes. Hit that line. Any further discussion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Byerly.
Yes.
Councilmember Conflin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes. Sixty. Consideration of entering into service agreements with Redmond's Critique of Comfort and Maintenance Inspection, BHBA system.
Turn, turn this back again to the Director of Public Works.
Okay, after the last few years, oh, sorry, my turn, so, after the last few years, we went to council with improvements to Second Avenue, and I provided proposals from Redmond's, other companies, and Redmond's got that proposal. And then for the airport, the same thing, where Redmond's had that proposal. And then, since we already uniformly worked with them together, we've always had them just come in to do services at City Hall. So they've provided a service agreement for all three facilities, and this is basically an inspection and maintenance agreement to make sure everything's operating. Hopefully, we'll keep everybody cool and warm in City Hall with this. I know the, this time of year gets a little tricky because it's cold weather, and then they get warm, or then it gets a little too cold, but this is a way to keep on top of that.
Let's wish council. Go ahead, ask questions.
Are you looking at the silver plan or the gold plan? Is once a year service enough compared to twice a year? What's your experience of that?
I would suggest for City Hall twice a year, because there's a power, that's how City Hall is cooled. That needs service, that does need service twice a year, and then the boiler inspection for the heat, because it's not all the same heat. For Second Avenue and the airport, we could do the, the silver plan. Because that's, that's primary heat down at the airport, and then we just have our regular boiler up at Second Avenue, gas boiler.
And to be clear, this is just, this is just inspection and a routine checkup. This is not repairs or anything like that. Nothing like that is included. This is simply an inspection and changing of filters.
They, they provide us a, like a maintenance discount if you, if you do read that. So if they, if they get called in.
Yeah, but to be clear, this is an inspection and a changing of filters. This is not repairs. Repairs are separate in addition to the cost of coming in. This is simply where you're, yeah, okay, just I, I want to be clear, because it can be confusing that there's nothing included in this but the inspection and changing the filters.
Yes.
Okay. Is that something our staff does on a regular basis, checks filters or changes them, or we are, we totally rely on Redmond's to do that for us?
Throughout the year, we do some of it. This is basically that, you know, check in on the spring like you would do at your house, make sure everything's running right. They do, you know, they have the special instruments that do the, the testing on the systems, make sure the right air conditioning fluid and the heat, the heat, actual heat pump components are functioning correct.
Any other questions?
No.
Do I have a motion?
Well, yeah. On the, on the recommendation of our, our Director of Public Works, those that, that need the silver level once a year and the gold level at City Hall for twice a year to keep our system up, it's better to, there's quite the list of inspection things, and cleaning, oils, and things, maintenance that you do. If you don't do pre-maintenance all the time. Yeah. Yes.
You made a motion?
Yeah.
I have a motion for, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second on the motion. Any further discussion? Call for the vote.
What's our current, do we do one year, once a year? Or do we do twice a year, or what's our current means?
We will, we do do, sorry, echoing, is somebody talking, or is that me?
Yeah, it's you.
Okay. We do do twice a year right now. So like I said, for the City Hall, they have the, the water tower and the boiler. The water tower gets turned off in the fall and then drained, and then preserved for the winter, and then in the spring we bring everything back online. But for Second Avenue and the airport, it is only once a year.
And we were contracting that out before, or were we doing it, and now we're looking to contract it out?
We just had Redmond's come in to handle everything.
And now the contract.
Right.
About crisis. It costs more, what we were doing, so this is a cost savings for us.
Correct.
We looked at the numbers, and that's, okay.
Any other questions before we move forward? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Byerly.
Yes.
Councilmember Conflin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson. Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes. Sixty. Consideration of having staff look into vacant property registry.
This is something that and goes along with the Property Maintenance Code and its implementation in February of this year. So many, many municipalities across Commonwealth of Pennsylvania have instituted ordinances, creating a vacant property registry. By and large, vacant properties account for most of the property maintenance issues that have to be regularly addressed in the city. You may remember a few years ago, a gentleman from North Joan Street coming because of a bank had foreclosed on his neighbor's home, and that was full of cats. It was never mowed, it was, windows weren't repaired. You know, that's a, that's a single example. I'm not going to say that's a typical example, but the vacant property registry would be something that the new property maintenance officer would keep track of. It is something that then creates a kind of work order that the individual would need to check on that property regularly to make sure it's still compliant the city code that was passed in February, and it would also enable us to keep track of it when it comes to lawn mowing, which is something that when absentee property owners fail to mow their lawns, the city does have to step in, do that mowing, and then leave the property for that accordingly. That would all be handled through the property maintenance office now. So the cost of the registry itself would be something that would help offset the cost of the property maintenance officer as well.
So you're just asking for authorization to look into it? We're not actually voting to put it into place, because we don't have a cost or anything else to go with, right?
It has to be implemented by ordinance. So if directed by council, then we would start the process to get an ordinance put together for your review.
How would somebody get on the vacant property registry? You expect them just out of the goodness of their heart to call in and say, hey, my building's vacant?
It depends on the municipality, how they've implemented it. I did look at a variety of examples, but not in any great detail. One municipality actually just retrieves the list from the county of properties that transfer hands and then reaches out to those property owners directly to find out when they intend to move in. Another municipality does have the individual go around and assess each home on a regular basis to see whether or not it's occupied. They also poll in that same municipality as compared to your utility bills. So obviously, if a home looks like it isn't occupied and is not consuming any water from the city's water system, it's highly likely that it's vacant, in which case then a letter would be sent to the individual. The times vary in different municipalities, so we'd have to see what's kind of consistent. There are some places that you have to register within 16 days of a property being vacant, which seems like that would be overwhelming. There are other places that basically by the sixth month of vacancy, you would need to be added to the property maintenance, or to the vacant property. There also are some cases where there are exemptions given where you register but don't have to pay a fee if you actually are remodeling or restoring the vacant property. You currently have permits in place and are getting regular inspections at intervals. You know, it's, you can get a permit, never do anything and let the permit run out, which would be something built in to make sure people don't do that. Uh, but to make sure people are actively engaged in the reconstruction or rehabilitation of the property is something that would, uh, ensure that the property is actually being assessed by the property uh, building code official, which would then not need the attention of the property maintenance officer as much because someone would be visiting.
So they so by instituting a vacant property fee, is that an implied contract that the city in return for the fee will conduct preventative inspections on my vacant property? So there's a continuum. I inherit grandma's house. Grandma's gone to Celestial Choir. And, and the property is vacant. I list it for sale. So I'm paying a bill to to limit it on a regular basis and show it. There comes a point in time at which nobody has bought it and I no longer have any interest in this property and I think, oh. Isn't that the point at which I should pay a fee? Make sure that the property is moved out because up until that point, I'm paying somebody to do that.
I haven't seen one that has an exemption for a home listed for sale. I'm not saying that isn't out there, but, um, you know, for the five that I did look at, I did not see that as an exception.
Well, technically you're not paying somebody to look after it for you until you sell it. So if you don't sell it and it's just a listing that hangs out there for five years, it's not technically having, doing anything.
None of the houses that I have listed, Bob, were ever vacant for five years.
Well, no. And that, and I think I, I kind of thought looking at this, that it encourages folks to move to, to not to, you know, if you're gonna lose interest in the property, you have options. Let's try to do something else besides have this fee come up. You know, here's your opportunity, sell, sell granny's house or, or
Move into it and take care of it.
Whatever, but do something with it and besides let it sit, deteriorate and so to the point that we have to do something about it that falls back into the city to cut the grass or to, you know, deal with whatever it is that has to tell clear the cats from the property if the roof collapses.
So what's which counsel?
Are we being asked to create a new position? Or who's, who's overseeing this?
The property maintenance officer, which is a position that's in the budget this year, would be, um, the individual that would be in charge of the vacant property registry. For all intensive purposes, this wouldn't have started till, uh, if adopted by council until next year. It's difficult to start things mid-course of a year. You need time also to explain to people what the new process is, get forms put together.
Well, I would move requesting city staff to come up with a proposal for a consideration for a vacant property.
I have a second.
Motion for Laura, a second, any further discussion?
Is the same, is, it's vacant and voided, the same thing? Would they take care of voided properties too? Or just vacant? Uh, or is it the same thing?
It's not necessarily the same thing.
Vacant becomes.
Blight itself, um, depending on how, I mean, everyone defines that differently. But a lot of what people call blight is property maintenance issues that were adopted in February to be addressed. And a home doesn't have to be vacant to be blighted. Or a business.
Do we have an idea the percentage or the number of vacant properties that are?
Uh, according to the city engineer, there are four hundred vacant properties. That includes apartment. That does exclude university-owned facility. So it's not a small amount.
Is that four hundred living units or four hundred?
Living unit.
Any other questions? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Byerly.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yeah.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes. Six F, consideration of the appointment of residents, residents vacancies on the Central County Water Filtration Authority and the Civil Service Commission.
I will ask Councilmember Missouri to help me with the first nominee's name.
Alora Figueroa.
Okay. Alora Figueroa of sixteen and a half North Jones Street. Uh, and Wilson Ricardo of fifty East Church Street. The request is to have council nominate them to the Central County Clinton County Water Filtration Authority. Those two residents will join residents June Hauser, Rich Marsa Kevich and myself in representing the city on the authority's board. And then also Wilson Ricardo to a vacancy on the Civil Service Commission. Wilson will join Mike Brendos on the commission. And there still is one remaining vacancy and I reached out to Lock Haven University Department of Criminal Justice to see if they can help find a city resident who would be, um, part of their program that would be suitable for that commission. The Civil Service Commission really, uh, meets once every two years to review the civil service rules. The civil service rules are recommended by them to council for adoption and become a city ordinance. That ordinance is what determines the process for hiring police officers in the city of Lock Haven. And so they just really have kind of a once every couple of years thing. And then we do a lot of work in their name in the hiring process because of the rules.
And is that affect, um, positions or civil service?
No, just the city's own.
What's which counsel?
Approve the suggested appointments.
Motion for Laura, a second, any further discussion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Byerly.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes. Sixteen, twenty twenty-two city beach schedule.
The community life director just happens to be here to talk about that.
We will be opening the city beach this year. Uh, the hours of operation this year will be Monday through Saturday from twelve, uh, twelve PM to six PM. During the hours of operation, lifeguards will be posted on duty. Any swimming done while lifeguards are not on duty is done at your own risk. Um, and this will begin June twelfth and go until August twentieth. So we're hoping to have eight weeks of swimming available, or ten weeks, I'm sorry, available at the city beach. And we are currently hiring for the twenty twenty-two season. So if you know any lifeguards, they can reach out to me. Our application is online and they can email it to me at k Campbell at Lock Haven PA dot com.
They need open water certification. I was talking to a lifeguard here. And she was afraid to apply because she.
She does, in the past, we have not, um, needed that. Um, I am looking to see, I've not been able to find on Red Cross. Um, whether or not, so I have reached out and wanted to find that out, but as of now, she can still apply, so.
The lifeguard's lifeguard. I don't know if there is an open water certification.
Yes.
There is.
We do have the buoys around too.
Typically, that's more like the ocean. So I know if you're like, you know, down in the beach in Jersey Shore, but I don't believe for a river that you need it.
The, um, city beach, of course, um, pandemic was something that was used, but was always at it at your own risk. So it will be nice to get the program back up and running.
Yes, right, yeah. Is it signed to tell people that walk down there that you're swimming at your own risk when there's not lifeguards?
Yes.
And to just make sure they're upgraded and not.
That's something we ran into during, and then because we weren't, we had to make sure it was signed because people were still going down. So.
Thank you. What are the dates again?
June twelfth to August twentieth.
And, and I, I, just from watching other municipalities, uh, in their difficulty, you don't think you'll have any trouble filling the positions?
Nope, I, I already have, uh, several.
Speaking of Lock Haven civil space, uh, if you go to the city's website under quick links, you can see our civil space link, there is a city beach page. So if you are interested or have children that would be interested in participating by swimming at the beach, you can go to that page and sign up for notifications. If anything were to change, then notifications will be sent out to the list of people that sign up to that.
Just to be clear, swimming when there is no lifeguard is at your own risk or protected?
Yes.
Okay, do we have any other new business?
I have none.
Thank you. So seven from FYI's or four stories, four commissions?
Uh, yes, the FYIs are not from authorities, boards, well, ABCs. Um, one is from the city of Easton that awards every year a municipality with very nice plaque for having the highest percentage to total of vote. Uh, that went to DuBois this year. I don't know what the controversy was in DuBois that let them win, but um, when it was lower borough, they had a big controversy. Uh, the next, um, is a schedule that was given to the Director of Public Works from Hawbaker, uh, for paving in Center and Lightfoming County or Clinton Counties. So you just want to check on the Clinton County ones. That way you're up to date if somebody were to ask you about paving. Yes, that's.
This is what a company the size of probably protect us.
Yes.
Very good.
That was provided at a official Penn dot Zoom meeting. That is what I received.
Okay.
Nice to see they haven't bogged themselves down with technology.
One could say we are overdoing it by typing.
I might have to readjust how I set my schedules, it looks like. And if you'd like to follow that, um, they're slated for July twentieth to be on State Route one fifty. Um, now in the meeting, they did say, so they do have other projects in Center County and Clinton County. Um, they do have some signal projects to get done. Uh, so, uh, you know, everything's dependent on when they actually get there, but you'll notice we're, we're at the, the, the tail end of the, the project. So as I meet with the construction progress, I'll keep you guys informed.
Thank you.
Well, that gives them a whole lot of practice before they get to here. And don't count on these dates because rain and delays. When they give it to you at the pre-construction meeting, they're never, they never hold their, they're never there.
I bet they were written in pencil.
Yeah.
There you go. That's, that's rather being efficient that way so that it's a reprint.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yeah, Tony?
Yes.
How is the, uh, how are the signal project going? Is it on schedule? Do they, do they feel it's on schedule?
Um, so last week's meeting, they're finishing up. I think they just started the one by the YMCA. Uh, they have their polls in, but they haven't delivered them onsite yet. Um, that'll be my, this week's, um, question to them is when they're going to set the actual polls. Um, I know that they did request, um, the, uh, uh, yeah, the, the, uh, sorry, um, the, the, the electric boxes um, for us to come down this week. So I know they are getting ready to set the new, um, electric and wiring to, uh, the, the new system. So that means that they should be right on par for, uh, selling the signal poles themselves.
But they will be done before the paving for on Church Street and Henderson in Maine.
They are proposed to be done, correct.
The wind rate, you have to be careful because of the rate of the weather, you know, the latest speed. Thanks, Tony.
We, to make sure you encourage them to make sure they are done before that.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, in the, in the, uh, construction meeting last week with Penn Dot, uh, that was brought up. And that is one of the reasons why we're towards the end of the paving schedule.
Okay, any other FYIs?
I have none here.
Does anyone have anything else to read for counsel?
Just quickly. Aware that council has asked the city manager to be vigilant for new forms of revenue. He's come up with two and I was rude about both of them, but I would not want that effort to be discouraged by the sounds of one small voice crying in the roof.
I think you were defeated on both things. You were rude about it anyway, so.
But to be clear, uh, Councilmember Morris, I've come up with three and you, uh, rejected all three, but I will continue to look until I find at least one.
That you agree with.
Somewhere, there has to be one. Well, the first is, uh,
For the Gerard.
For three hundred, for the three hundred Belt One Avenue. The second would be, uh, taxing state universities.
Yeah.
And the third would be, uh, the school. No, no, vacant property.
He wasn't a get close to that.
Did you vote yes for that?
Yes.
Oh, well, I see you corrected.
I just want to hope that, uh, the Coannis Club of Lock Haven has a spaghetti dinner on the twentieth, which is Wednesday. It's drive-through. It's, uh, the best sauce in the world and it's good spaghetti, a good deal. The second thing I'd like to, uh, welcome all the people coming in for the Hinerview Challenge, which is Saturday. Uh, they're expecting like fourteen hundred runners plus a lot of volunteers to put that on with different checkpoints and what all they have to do. So town is going to be really full. And I think I had one other question, but it had to do with summer movies. I, I would, I know because of COVID, we got away from those, but are we looking back at them again?
Yes, we are.
Even though we have a busy summer, but it's time to line them up too. And I hadn't heard anything about it, but.
We actually had discussed eternally, um, traditionally we do children's movies and we have talked about doing a couple of classic movies for grownups. Which would be a different kind of event from the children, but something that maybe, um, if council was receptive to, we could, you know, bring a blanket and a bottle of wine and watch Castle Blanca.
Well, we, uh, we always had a great sponsor with, with the hospital.
Yeah.
And, uh, I would think we reached out to them again to sponsor in force, but, uh, it, it's another thing for something, that somebody to do something in town. And, uh, I, I think we should keep working on it, but thank you.
Yeah.
Well, the assistant to, uh, yes, Community and Economic Development Program Manager, which is the temporary summer position. That both, both Abby and Casey's offices have. Um, that's something that we can task him with. He does have several good ideas. Um, he actually is an individual who's from the area, but, um, just happens to be available right now to do some work for the city. Um, he has a master's degree from Yale. And just so happened to be around at the right time so that we could tap his brain temporarily. But, yeah, that's, uh, is definitely something we can task to him and he starts tomorrow.
No, Steve, obviously he couldn't get into Lock Haven University.
He couldn't get into.
Anything else?
No.
All right, well, I'll finish you off. What you're watch for, there's going to be an event coming up to announce the summer concert series, uh, schedule, dates, bands, all that. It's going to be before our next council meeting. So wanted to talk about it a little bit tonight, uh, it'll. It's going to be before our next council meeting, so wanted to talk about it a little bit tonight. Uh, it'll be announced when that event will happen. So with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
You do.
For sure. Thank you.